Good evening, citizens and board and staff. At this time, we will ask Mr. Darrell Robinson, Robbins?
Rollins.
Rollins, I'm sorry, Mr. Rollins, to come and give us the invocation, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Harrison, Board of Board Members, everyone assembled, let us pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day, oh God. Oh God, it's a day we've never seen before, God, and a day we'll never see again. Oh God, right now, Lord, I ask that you would come into this place, Lord, like never before, God. Bless this board, oh God. Give them, oh God, the enthusiasm, Lord, the discernment, Lord, and, oh God, the effectiveness to lead this county, oh God. Everyone, under the sound of my voice, God, give out a special blessing. Lord, as we go through our daily precious, Lord, of life, oh God, and our jobs, it's easy to forget, oh God, that we, you are our boss, Lord, we work for you, oh God. And so, I ask that you would redirect our hearts and our minds tonight, oh God, and put you first in everything that we do. Remind us, oh God, to let everything that we say tonight, oh God, and the meditations that we have in our hearts, oh God, be acceptable in your sight, for you are our strength and you are our redeemer. So bless us now, oh God, and we shall be blessed. Keep us and we shall be kept, and your name will forever be praised, for it's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Thank God, amen.
Thank you. Board members, we have a moment of silence at this time, please. May we stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, the next thing is agenda, adoption. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
It moved in second, all in favor, let it be known by the usual sign of aye. Aye. Nays, hearing none, agenda is adopted. Next, we have our consent items for tonight, and Mr. Harrison, you gonna?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Good evening, Chairwoman Little, members of the board. Tonight, we do have five consent items for consideration. One, number one, being the approval of draft minutes for six two twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Number two, being the approval of accounts payable for the month of May, two thousand twenty-two. Number three, a request for public hearing on eight four, two thousand twenty-two, for appropriation of funds for the county's radio communication project, as well as to amend the budget for the purchase of a fire pumper. Number four, Lob Lolly Solar LLC has requested to defer action until August fourth, two thousand twenty-two. And the fifth consent item on this evening would be a resolution, the board adopting or approving a resolution, naming Surrey County as a designated emergency response agency.
Board members, you've heard the reading of the consent items. Are there any items that you want removed? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of our consent items.
Madam Chair, so move.
Have a second, please.
Second.
It moved in second, all those in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye. Aye. Nays, hearing none, ayes have it, motion carried, thank you. Next, we have on our agenda new, let's see. Public hearing, okay, thank you, David.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, public hearing for the Surrey County ordinance related to the exemption of taxes on property for the elderly and disabled persons, and also, I think, for the veterans. And the presentation will be done by Mr. Jackins. Please, if you will come forward, Mr. Jackins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to summarize how this, how we've gotten to where we are with the tax relief program. In two thousand nineteen, our office brought forward the need to increase the limits for the income for tax relief for household, for a household from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand, and that was increased, and the discount allowed at the time was increased from five hundred to seven fifty. In two thousand twenty-one, the discount amount was then increased to a thousand dollars. We have, we have continued to have the proportional deductions where you are twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, or a hundred percent based on those incomes. A few weeks ago, Mr. Drury brought forward that me, we should take a look at that again and see what we could do about the tax relief program. All tax relief applications were due in our office on May first, so essentially, the time for applying for tax relief this year had passed. But we did find a way to go forward, to look at getting rid of the proportional deductions where you are just now capped at a maximum of a thousand dollars, you know, for your, for the tax relief. And going forward, what has been proposed, and what I believe the public hearing will address tonight, is that we're looking at increasing the income of households from thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand, and net assets will increase from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, excluding the home and one acre. This is in line with what surrounding localities who have real estate tax relief, including Alawite, Southampton, and Prince George, have done since we last increased our threshold from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand in two thousand nineteen, which was effective for two thousand twenty. And just to elaborate a little bit on that, our office, you know, this program we, and it's handled in the commissioner's office, and prior to all of this, we didn't go, we went from two thousand seven to two thousand nineteen without any changes to the program. So I believe this is a time to get things where it is, where we believe that they need to be as well.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Jackins will be here, I'm sure, for questions or the comments. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments, and please come up, give your name and your district. Three minutes, and address your questions to the chair, thank you.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Mr. Williams.
Jeremiah Williams from the Dendron District. I am in strong support of this policy change. I think right now, as we look at the cost of living and the stagnation of many of our senior citizens' income, that's important that we live and let live. And so, I strongly encourage you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Barrett, Dendron. I also support this tax increase for the seniors. It doesn't make a difference what we think about today, so I definitely support it, a hundred percent, thank you.
Robert Chandler, Bacon's Castle District. I also support it very strongly. There are many seniors in this county that actually could use more relief because of what's currently happening with our cost of living, et cetera. I read an article yesterday morning that said sixty-five percent of the small businesses in the United States are gonna fail unless tax relief is provided. And although the same number, sixty-two percent of them, or excuse me, thirty-two percent of them can't pay their bills right now. So this is definitely needed for senior citizens. Thank you.
Floor is still open, if there are any other comments, in support of and not in support of. I'm not seeing anyone approach, so at this time, we will close the public hearing and thank Jonathan, Mr. Jackins, for his presentation, and those of you who supported our efforts to help our senior citizens. Next, we will have comments from board members. Mr. Elliott, do you want to?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Just, just briefly, I just wanted to thank Mr. Jackins for working on this and coming up with ideas of how to make it work in the midst of a year, and to the board members for entertaining it as, as well, and I'm forgetting the figures off the top of my head. Pretty humbling, Surrey County population is growing older, as we know. I think it's somewhere hovering around twenty-five percent. All the elderly in the county, and of those twenty-five percent, I think I look at the census, and eleven, almost twelve percent are in, below the poverty level, which is thirty thousand dollars per household, so. So thanks to the board and staff for, for working on this.
I just wanna basically reiterate what's been said, that at this time, a tax break for anyone is a positive thing, but especially for our seniors who are really on a fixed income and trying to make ends meet. So I also wanna just say thank you to Mr. Drury and to Mr. Jackins and to the citizens who spoke. It's a positive thing, and I, I think we should be really pleased that we're headed in this direction, that we can help them out.
I'd like to personally thank Mr. Drury for bringing this up again this year and making it, making it happen. Mr. Jackins, for his support and efforts in providing the numbers. Again, for those who spoke this evening in support of this issue. And again, as Ms. Monahan said, anybody who can get some relief, whether it be tax or whatever, is well-deserving this, in this time of day. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, and I so agree. You know, when you don't know something is there, and you look for others to give you direction. And I certainly want to thank our attorney on our board for researching and doing that work, Mr. Drury, and for Mr. Jackins allowing and for it all working out together to bring about a change for our senior citizens. And maybe, as things move forward, we may can do even different, better, I don't know, but at least there will be some relief. And I think this takes effect next year, with a portion of it, like the thousand dollars taking effect this year. So if there's nothing else, Mr. Jackins, did you have anything else you want to add? Okay, then we will at this.
Just that the income level increase is for next year, the proportional deduction is eliminated for the current year.
Okay, thank you. But if anyone have any questions, Mr. Jackins is always in his office, and he's willing to see you and answer any of your questions. So we're going to close remarks by the staff at this time, because they've had their remarks. Under new business, we have adoption of the updated two thousand twenty-two Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that's going to be covered.
Should we take action on this tonight?
We need to make a motion.
Okay, a motion to adopt our, thank you, Mr. Elliott.
I'll, I'll make that motion to adopt the ordinance for the exemption of taxes on property for the elderly and disabled, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second to adopt the reductions for the senior citizens. All of those in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye. 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 Nays, hearing none, ayes have it, and motion is carried, is official, thank you. Under new business, Mr. Phelps, if you would come forward and share with these citizens what's happening with the emergency services.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Harrison. What I'm here to do tonight is to present you with the resolution for adopting the Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan for two thousand twenty-two. First, I wanna give you a little bit of backdrop on it. There was a slide presentation that was presented to you in the agenda, as well as some paperwork I left on your desk there, showing the Surrey mitigation actions that are proposed to take place. This was a process that we went through, it's been about a year and a half process, and what I did was, we used to, as you are familiar, Surrey County used to be part of the Richmond Crater Hazardous Mitigation Plan, and we made that switch over to the Hampton Roads Hazardous Mitigation Plan. And what I did is I made sure that we interjected ourselves on that so that Surrey would have a voice during this planning process, so we were part of the planning committee. It was made up of seventeen different jurisdictions throughout the Hampton Roads District. And what we, the process began is, first, we organized our resources, then we assessed the risk, developed a plan, and then we do the, perform the adoption, implement, implement, and maintain the plan. The different risks that we assessed as a group of the seventeen localities include flooding, flood risk, a hundred-year flood analysis, sea level rise, tropical storms, infectious diseases, this, this is new to all of us, pandemic flu, radon exposures is one of them as well. And then what we did is we revised, we reviewed the district, the damages and frequencies that these events occur throughout the seventeen locations, and we come up with an assessment of the actual estimated damages and things along those lines. Then we ranked those hazards as to, that we identified, and you'll see the ranking is in part of that presentation that I provided you. Then after we ranked those, we proceed to develop a plan on how we're going to, you know, plan of goals on how we're gonna mitigate those. Once we revise the plan goals, plan goals include increase community resilience by reducing vulnerability to hazards, educate the public about hazard vulnerabilities and ways to reduce risk, strengthen and develop partnerships for mitigating hazard impacts. And then, we developed a list of mitigation strategies, and once we develop that, the region takes on and, and we, we develop the plan on how we're gonna mitigate that. And that is what I supplied you with that document, is the Surrey County Plan for that. What we're asking tonight is to adopt the regional hazardous mitigation plan. Would you like me at this time to read through the resolution? Okay. Adopting the, the updated two thousand twenty-two Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Surrey County, Virginia, recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property within our community, and whereas undertaking hazardous mitigation actions will reduce the potential for harm to people and property from future hazard occurrences, and whereas an adopted hazard mitigation plan is required as a condition of future funding for mitigation projects under multiple FEMA pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs, and whereas the Surrey County Department of Emergency Services participated in the FEMA-prescribed mitigation planning process to prepare the, this hazard mitigation plan. And whereas the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and Federal Emergency Management Agency, Region Three officials, have reviewed the two thousand twenty-two hazards, or Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan, and approved its contingent upon the official adoption of the participation, participating governments and entities. And that's.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Board members, you've heard the report coming from Mr. Phelps, and the request to adopt the emergency management mitigation plan. So if there are any questions? Questions? If not, we would. That's all right, go ahead.
Mr. Phelps, I see, I didn't get a copy of this, 'cause I guess I wasn't here at the time, maybe I missed it, but I see on all these papers, the estimated cost of a lot of these, and many of them have to be determined. Like the fir, this is what I'm looking at, so.
Back page.
Sorry?
Which page, the back? Like the estimated cost for background information. Well, it, a lot of that is like, if you look at the last one, it says improved GIS or nine-one-one capabilities with better data collection, integration, and function. So that's what we would like to accomplish, however, the estimated cost is to be determined because we would have to have a contractor or somebody along that lines provide us with the cost to do that.
I understand, but this is gonna be a cost to the county taxpayers?
This, this would be, these are, these are recommendations on what we need to do to try and mitigate future hazards. So the GIS actually, this may not be something that has much cost involved, because we are working with Mr. Wade on some GIS things now, for the future. But this is something that we're beginning now, so it may, it may not be additional cost, but that's to be determined. I can't, yeah, I couldn't tell you that.
So I, I guess at this time, we do not have an estimated cost of what we call yearly or, or?
No, sir.
Thank you.
An adoption of the plan doesn't have any bearing on the cost. This is, this is just the, this is the plan on what we need to, what we as a county should be doing to move forward to help mitigate.
Thank you. Other board members? Okay, thank you. And if not, then we will move to the adoption of the plan and the resolution.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the adoption of the two thousand twenty-two Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan that now includes Surrey County.
I second that.
And the resolution?
Yeah, at resolution.
And the resolution that's been presented as well.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second, all those that are in agreement, please let it be known by the sign of aye. 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 Nays, hearing none, ayes have it, thank you. Next, we have the Surrey County Love Works Sign Project and Location, Mr. Jobbrey.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Harrison and others present. Tonight, staff is asking for the approval of the Love Works Sign to be placed in the lawns of the Circuit Court Lawn adjacent to the visitor's center. By the direction of leadership, economic development has taken steps in the Love Works Project. The Love Works Program is a statewide initiative to create more travel and help strengthen the Virginia is for lovers message. Our department released a survey that allowed citizens to vote on each letter of the love sign. And it was determined that these letters were gonna be L to represent the brick Bacon's Castle, a tractor tire to represent, you know, our agriculture, and the letter, and also V, that our fish to represent our waterways and wildlife, and E to represent our logging and forestry in Surrey County. We got around, about a hundred and forty-eight responses, and that was in January. And in April, economic development was notified by the Virginia Tourism Corporation of a five thousand dollar grant that was received for the creation for the Love Work. It is the county's goal to make Surrey County welcoming to all visitors and citizens. The preferred location of the Love Works is the courthouse lawn due to the high daily traffic count per VDOT and the close proximity of the visitor's center so that those visitors can learn more about Surrey County businesses and attractions. With tonight's board approval, staff will submit an application to the town of Surrey for their approval of the Love Works and begin construction. If there are any questions, please let me know.
And, board members?
I, I do, I, I, I'm not understanding, who has control of the Circuit Court Lawn? I'm a bit concerned about the Circuit Court judges. And I don't know if we have an answer to that.
The county, from what I've experienced here recently with renovations that had to take place with the burst pipeline, from what I understand is the county, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I just was down at the courthouse the other day and heard some, some grumblings. We've removed, we've removed something a year ago, and, and anyway, I just was hearing some grumblings that made me pause, the location. That's a bit, bit concerned about it.
Well, I guess we can find out for sure before we do anything that we shouldn't do. I mean, you know, I don't think that would, we're going to be submitting an application, and that application will be, you want approval to submit the application?
To the town.
To the town. But you're questioning whether it should be submitted to the judges, or?
What's, what's the submission to the town? Explain it to me.
Is, it's an actual sign permit.
Gotcha.
Because this is in the town, we would have to get a sign permit.
Understand. I, I, I'm okay, but, and I don't know how the board members will feel about this, but I would feel better if the, if, if we approved it on the location contingency that it's approved by the, the Circuit Court judge, doesn't have any problems with that.
And I have reached out to Judge Tomco. Unfortunately, I haven't received a phone call back. But that is, that's another option as well, that we can get his feedback as well.
Would you like us to suggest other alternatives if he's negative, this evening or not?
That, that would be great. You know, the two other alternatives that we had in mind was, you know, on the county property here, adjacent to the flagpole, or at the Parks and Rec Center.
And the one that the town would allow you to have in the, I call it the middle ground here, whatever it is, between the two streets, too.
Oaks Park. That could be an option as well.
So if the board is okay with it, I don't mind making the motion for approval contingent upon the location approved by the, by the Circuit Court judge. They, they tell me some pretty scary things sometimes when I walk in there, so I always advocate to them, if you understand.
Yeah, and the intention for that location was so that visitors went, because the whole initiative is, you know, we, they have a whole following from the state and outside travelers. They go take a picture, and we wanted to entice them to go to the visitor's center than to learn more about Surrey County and their attractions. And that's why we decided for that location.
And I don't have a problem with that. Again, I'll make that motion contingent upon Circuit Court judge, okay?
Yes, sir.
And alternate locations that you have suggested, if, if not, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Board members, any other questions or concerns?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Drury.
All right, the motion is second. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of aye. Aye. Nays, hearing none, ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Jobbrey. I guess you're up next.
I am, I believe so.
You are up next, okay, and this is the Surrey County Improvement Grant Program Agreement between the county of Surrey, Virginia, and the Economic Development Authority of Surrey County. You have the floor, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Harrison and others. Tonight, staff is asking for the approval of the Surrey County Improvement Grant Program. In January of this year, Virginia's Gateway Region hired Retail Strategies, who is a real estate consultant group, to conduct a downtown strategic plan for each locality that they serve. Within this plan, it was determined that Surrey County addressed blight of commercial storefronts and to make available turnkey commercial properties to attract more businesses within the town and the county. Since then, economic development staff has worked with our county attorneys and EDA on crafting a Surrey County Improvement Grant Program. The program is to restore, sustain, and improve commercial properties located within the county and to include the towns of Surrey, Dendron, and Claremont. The EDA will provide reimbursable matching grant funds to property owners in Surrey County to aesthetically enhance their properties in an effort to revitalize and strengthen their businesses and encourage private investment. The Economic Development Authority has been created to promote economic development of Surrey County pursuant to enabling legislation of fifteen-point-two dash four, forty-nine-hundred. And also, the authority has a right to distribute grants or property for economic development pursuant to fifteen-point-two forty-nine-oh-five. Included in your packets tonight, it is the actual county and EDA agreement, which includes a qualification criteria, disbursement prerequisites, and um application program guidelines, and agreement with the recipient. Um in closing, staff is asking for approval of the approch- appropriation and transfer of twenty thousand dollars to the authority for the purpose of administrating the Surrey County Improvement Grant Program. And if there are any questions, please let me know.
Mr. The board members, questions?
I have a question. With that twenty thousand, could you um specify exactly what, what you see happening with that additional money? The twenty thousand?
Correct. For recipients?
Yes.
Um they could um improve facade or interior um interiors of their structure um or b- building. Um signs can be pu- put up um and that list of qualifications are within the um program guidelines provided to you.
Okay, and the other question I have, how many businesses are we looking at that would be receiving money from the twenty thousand?
So I couldn't get an exact number from um of how many physical businesses that we have that were needed blight and um storefront repairs. Um but we do have many within the town and the county.
So really, if we had twenty, I don't know that we'd have that many, but we're only looking at each person getting a thousand dollars?
No, ma'am. Th- this would only be to one or two recipients per fiscal year.
And would they be applying for that?
Correct.
Okay. So it would be like a grant?
Yes, ma'am.
If you have more than one or two apply, how you gonna decide which ones get it, which ones don't?
Um that would be, it's a first come, first served process, and that would be determined by the EDA. And those funds, once they're um dedicated to those recipients, um you know, they're just used up for that year and they would have to apply again for the following year if the board approves that again for the following year.
Mr. Javory?
Yes, sir.
You, you had mentioned that this was some, somehow tied in with the uh gateway? How, how, how was, what is the connection there with the regional gateway?
So the Virginia's Gateway Region, they hired real estate consultants, their names Retail Strategies, and they conducted a downtown strategy plan for each locality that they serve. And so through that plan, it was concluded that this is one of the things that Surrey County needs in order to attract more businesses.
Mr. Javory, my concern is that in essence, we probably won't be able to serve but one business in Surrey County.
Correct. And, and that's what the program is set up to do for now, um due to the funds that have been allocated towards this.
And the funds are allocated through the retail strategic or through the? Economic development?
Correct.
Alright, okay. Alright, board members?
Sorry. So if, how our business is gonna be notified of, of this um money that you're, you're providing to, to them, and again, I just have a real difficult time understanding that some people out in, out in seats may own a business, they already know about it, so they have a leg up and they may be, you know?
So it would be, it would be like our other grant programs that we've um, you know, ran through our EDA. Um it would be advertised prior to, we would have a specific date of when we, you know, a future date in which we would take applications for that. Um and there would be mailers um that would be sent out to um all business owners.
But you said first come, first served, so if I was a small business and got the application the morning of the, of the due date, I would be sitting in front of your office when you turned the light to hand it in to be the first one.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Would it be more logical to possibly take all applications and review all of them? Depending on what your application has and what your specifications are and what, what the storefront would do to improve their business?
Mm-hmm.
To review those and kind of prioritize those?
And, and that's something we can do. If the board wishes, we can amend that and, you know?
I just think first come, first served. It's just you know, again, I wouldn't be sitting on your doorstep camping out for a few days.
Right.
Be able to hand it to you the morning of, of, of uh opportunity. That's just my personal opinion.
I, I agree with Mr. Calhoun. I think it should be more of a vetting process of who we gonna give the funds to instead of just the first application that comes through the door. The EDA can get the applications and review them and see that the, the proper channel to function with. I, I would approve it based upon that.
Okay.
I agree with them also. It, it's gonna be um, and then you want to, when they finish with their, their renovations, you want to be able to highlight it. You want the community to see, this is what our twenty, your twenty thousand dollars of, you know, have, what was accomplished?
Correct.
With that twenty thousand dollars. And if you just approved the first one come through the door, I don't know if there is a period of time they have to finish the work. It may be in the paperwork here, but there are some vetting and some other things that probably should be in that application. I did see the application.
Yes, and tha- that is all um entailed in the application. Um but we can amend that to where there would be a certain period of time to receive those applications and then, you know, all those applications would then be reviewed by the REDA.
Would there be a requirement for them to prove that they've spent at least that money, like receipts and things like that?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Good.
It's a match.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody can hear me or not. This is, they'll have to, um I think, I think you can approve it without uh and deleting number sixteen, which says this is a first come, first served program if the board wants to do that.
Madam Chair, I move that the approval of the grant uh between Surrey County and the EDA and the amount of twenty thousand dollars with the removal of item sixteen.
And the amendment that we made?
That is the amendment.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, board members, is, need a second? I'll second the motion.
Mr. Little, I don't, I, I, I'm not sure what the MOU is. I don't have an item number sixteen. Do we have that copy?
Must be.
I should have.
I don't see a number, I mean, what's, what I have is here memorandum of understanding Economic Development Authority of Surrey County. I, I'm not sure this is the?
Item sixteen, it's in our packet. Item sixteen state this is a first come, first served program. That's, that's.
Oh, it's, oh, it's in, on, it's not handout?
No, it's in, it's in our.
I'm sorry.
It's in uh, it's in our packages provided for us uh under Surrey County Improvement Grant Agreement with EDA renewed draft. It's in the draft. And it is item sixteen.
Okay. Oh, I see it. Thank you. I see it now.
Are we ready to vote? It's been moved in second. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I.
Aye.
Aye. Nays?
I'm a nay.
Okay, one nay and four? Ayes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may say, Mr. Javory, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up and would just, I want to give a shout out to Coggins Electric down here that if any applicant wants to know what to do with their business, it really, really looks nice coming into Surrey now. Uh they've done a good job.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that's what we're looking for, to spruce up and, and have that um come within this grant.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Madam Chair, I would like to make an announcement uh regarding Mr. Yody Javory.
Yes, sir.
Uh we regretfully announced that Mr. Javory will be leaving us. He has accepted a position in Prince George County as their Director of Economic Development, and we congratulate him. Uh we thank him for all the work that he's done here uh in Surrey County. And we know that you're only a phone call away if we need you in the future. And I don't know if the board has any comments at this time regarding that.
Board members, comments?
Madam Chair, I would like to uh say ditto to Mr. Harrison as remarks. We thank Mr. Javory for exemplary service to Surrey County with the EDA, and we wish him Godspeed and uh thankfully, we have a friend that we can call in a time of need. Thank you, sir.
I, I reiterate that. Thanks, thanks for your time and congratulations on your opportunity and, and push some things down this way, just across the line.
I agree with them. As I've stated to you earlier, we're gonna miss you and we thank you for your services in Surrey County. We'll let you be blessed in your new job.
Mr. Javory, we just met, but I've heard your name before, and I know that you have been doing great things in the county. And I know that Prince George is getting a great economic developer. That's not your title, I'm sure, but um I know that you'll do great things for Prince George as well and I, and, and we are going to miss you here in the county because as I said, we just met. But, but I didn't know of you and things you've been doing, so good luck with your new, new position.
Thank you.
Mr. Javory, echoes and, and kudos, like everyone else has said. I'm not gonna reiterate them, but I wish you well with your new position, sir.
Thank you. And, and I thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity. I had a great time here. Um you know, learning about Surrey County and getting a lot of things done. Um I thoroughly enjoyed my time with leadership and I wish you guys the best of luck because there are, there are a lot of challenges here, but there are a lot of great things as well that we, that you guys have here. And I'm a phone call away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Board members, next we have the basic um service agreement between Surrey County and the Federal Engineering Consultant for Mobile Radio Communication, and we're gonna ask Mr. Phelps to come forward and share um with the board and the citizens what we're, that contract is looking like. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um good evening again. Uh we recently, the board recently approved the contract for the uh radio system, for the new radio system, the nine-one-one uh service. And um with that, Federal Engineering was the consultant that helped us along the RF, through the RFP, up until the award of the contract. And what we're doing is asking for um Federal Engineering to continue and stay on through the build-out process uh of the radio system. Uh I will act as the project manager part, portion of the, for the county, the liaison with the county, um working directly with Federal Engineering.
Thank you. So your request tonight is that we would um allow Federal Engineering to continue to work with our EMS to?
Correct.
Finish that process?
Yeah, through the build-out. And it's, it's approximately, what we're looking at is approximately a fourteen-month period of time.
And I think we had the cost. Do you have the cost?
I do not.
Okay. Was it, I think it was in um?
Not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, I think is what is that?
Okay.
That contract. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Board members, you've heard the request. Um any questions or discussion? And if not, we would introduce a motion to approve that agreement.
Madam Chair, this is, this is something that we've been needing in the county for some period of time, and I applaud our emergency services for the work that they have done to do all they can to keep our citizens safe here in the county as well as our officers and EMS members that go on these different calls. So I would move that we would authorize a county administrator to execute the basic service agreement with Federal Engineering.
I second that.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of I. Aye. Nays? You're none, ayes have it, and thank you, board members, because this is something so very important for this community. Um I don't know why, I'll just put this out there, why the state of Virginia doesn't take care of every county's um emergency services. That's something I'm gonna introduce to them, because I don't think they've thought about it yet. Alright, moving on. Appointments. Next, we have appointments and to the Board of Social Services, and I think that is? Blackwater District.
Madam Chair, that's?
Mr. Jury?
It is, and, and thanks to Ms. Rollins. I had put the message out to citizens and um didn't get a lot of response, but Ms. Rollins alerted me to. I think we all know Ms. Eliza Drew?
Yes.
Uh Danit Dendron, and, and a good friend, and um I saw her recently and she said that she would accept it if uh we so appointed her. So she's aware of that and said she'll be watching this evening. She couldn't make the meeting because I think she had a call for something. But uh, so I'm, if y'all are okay, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint her to the Department of Social Services Board. I believe that will be from July twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-six is what it would be. And if anybody's got any questions about who she is, um.
Mr. Drew, her name again, uh you, please?
Eliza, E-L-I-Z-A Drew.
Thank you.
Hey, you've heard the appointment request of Ms. um Eliza Drew to the Board of Soc- Social Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I. Aye. Nays? You're none, ayes have it, and we're gonna, glad to have Mrs. Drew on board about social services.
Mrs. Little?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I have in my district someone who's gonna expire in November of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Is it too early? I've talked with them to extend theirs. If, if I can get that approved, is it too early to do that? So I won't forget? If it is, that's fine.
So they expire November of twenty-twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go ask our attorney right now.
Mr. Hefty?
You can extend the term if you'd like.
I would like to make a motion then to extend Ms. Eunice Gay um for the social services for the term of November, I'm sorry, December first, twenty-twenty-two through uh November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, if those, I, I don't know those dates of year, so, okay, it's on there? Okay, great, alright. So board members, you've heard the request coming from the Surrey District to appoint uh Ms. Gay? To extend her um appointment for the Surrey District. Do I have a motion? Oh, is that, you're making a motion?
I am making a motion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that um Mrs. Gay will uh, will remain with the Board of So- Social Services until year twenty-six. All in favor, let it be known by the sign of I. Aye. Opposed? Nays? Haven't heard none. The ayes have it and her um appointment has been extended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Calhoun? Next, we have um presentations. Um Mr. Wade?
Good evening, Chair Little, members of the board, Mr. Harrison, um and Mr. Hefty on the, on the phone. Um tonight, before we ha- we have a presentation by our consultants, Summit Design Engineering. Um and they're presenting tonight, um based on, um they're here tonight to go over a recent survey that's been out in the community um for energy projects for, for uh Surrey County. Um our planning commission um set out on the task to um have a comprehensive plan update uh relative to the energy projects. Um there have been quite a few um utility skill solar applications and quite a few in the queue. If you look at the PJM um queue, you, you understand there, there's quite a bit more projects out there. And so we thought it might be best that we revisit the And so, we thought it might be best that we revisit the, the, the almost new comprehensive plan that was done in 2000, I think it was done in 2020. And so, at this time, we wanted to, you know, ask the community what they, what they saw, what they see with energy projects and, you know, what we've done so far. How have we done as, as a community and where do you think we should go in the future? And so, without further ado, I do, we do have Ms. Ann Darby, as well as Noah Holmes Foster, to, to present to you tonight the findings of the survey. I think you all have in your packets the results of that in a memo form, as well as, I think you might have been sent a, some other, some other detailed information. So, at this time, I'll give the, the mic over to Ms. Ann Darby.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Good evening. Madam, I'm great. How are you? Thank you, thank you, everyone, for having me. Thank you, Horace, for that introduction. I do, may I offer a slight amendment? And that is, I'm going to give you just an overview of the whole process. We'll talk about the survey, the survey results, but we'll also talk about, about some scenarios that the county might want to use to address energy projects in general. So, again, I will, I'll give you the background, the need for the amendment. I will talk about the public input process and then talk about potential guidelines, way the county, some ways that the county may, may address these issues. The, as you may know, the solar, and only solar, is addressed in the current comprehensive plan. And it's mostly about utility-scale solar and where, some guidance about where they might be cited. You know that you have a, a solar ordinance, but at the same time, there are many, many large utility-scale solar projects that are happening. I think solar is probably on the tip of everyone's tongue. And so, we're, we are doing this about all, this amendment about all energy projects. But, as you can imagine, most of the conversation ends up being about utility-scale solar. If we do an amendment to the comprehensive plan, this will give guidance to, to staff and to the planning commission when they are reviewing applications and updating other policies, such as the solar ordinance, which would then take the county's intent and put it into law so that there is that guidance. So, the current language, just so, just so you know, if you're not familiar with it, it does, it does talk about evaluating land use decisions in terms of economic value. But then specifically about solar energy, there are some citing requirements in terms of avoiding or minimizing impact to prime farmland and farmland of statewide significance. We've taken this into consideration in some of the calculations that we've been working on. Solar facilities should not be located within residential investment areas, which is a lot of the area north and south of here. So, solar facilities should be screened from towns, residential areas, and routes 10 and 31. They should not be, they should not visually impact scenic and cultural resources. And they should not be cited, they should be cited as close to existing electric transmission lines as possible. So, there's a, I think all of you got a memo. I have paper copies. And if you would also like the memo with the background information, and in there, we have a map of, of all energy facilities, solar, existing, proposed, gas lines, electric transmission lines, and the nuclear plant. So, you've seen that. It's part of your packet if you'd like a paper copy. Or if anyone else would like a paper copy, Mr. Holmes Foster will be happy to give you one. So, in, in general, we've done some calculations. I'm not going to bore you with the calculations. We've updated a little bit, but as you, as you know better than anyone, there are more solar, utility-scale solar projects coming down the pipe. They may or may not get approved, so I won't go, I won't go deep into the calculations. But in general, we did GIS calculations and talked about the percentage of, of the county of developable land in the county that, that currently, or current plus approved projects are taking up. And then also, we also addressed, I'll get to that in a minute, but prime farmland. So, so right now, in a nutshell, the existing solar projects take up about 10% of developable land in the county. So, when we talk about this without a motion, we're looking at land, land used, land that, that could potentially be used, given either straight-line projection with no intervention, you know, strict intervention, or something in between. We'll talk more about these scenarios. So, of prime farmland, we get to, it ends up being about 11.2% of prime farmland in the county that is already used for energy projects. So, we're making no judgment absolutely, at all. We're just doing GIS calculations. Again, this is the prime farmland that was used to make the calculations and historic properties. So, we're incorporating all of these already into our GIS analysis. And without judgment or deciding where we're going to go, that's up, up to you all to decide. But we have this, all of this information gathered and ready to make calculations, depending on where you all want to go. So, we have had a community engagement process. We've had a survey that was open for about a month and a half. We got, we got 181 responses. I'll talk more about that. But it's, it's not a representative slice of every person in the county, but it is a, it does tell you the thoughts and the concerns, feelings, interests of the people who are paying attention to this and who you want to be part of the conversation. So, even though it's not a representative sample, we think that it's, that it's still very valuable information. The comprehensive plan, as you know, the comprehensive plan should be reflective of the county's vision, and that means that community input is incredibly important. So, so far, we had two focus groups with both residents, industry representatives, and community leaders. And some of you were at that and also the open house. We had an open house about a month ago in the evening and had a very good, a good showing. People are very passionate about this topic. They are very knowledgeable about this topic and wanted to share. So, the feedback from focus groups in general, we have all of the information in this PowerPoint, which I don't need to go into, but can if you want to, of all of the survey responses. But in general, the feedback from the focus groups was their concerns by people that attended over the conversion of farmland and timberland. There are some issues from previous solar developments in terms of storm water, traffic, wildlife passage, and variants from site plans. So, we heard a lot of particular stories that, that people shared about loss of trees or develop, a new project not meeting with what was the site plan that was approved. This is allegedly. I don't have this proof. And then there are questions over the benefit of the solar, especially as compared to nuclear, in terms of the length of time that, you know, jobs are created, that the economic benefit comes to the county. So, again, we are just bringing the information to you without any preconceived notion. There was general consensus in the focus groups that recently, after a couple of legislative changes have been made, both statewide and at the county level, that there are better community benefits in terms of getting, getting more money and then also, what, to, to the county. But also, people feel a little bit better, but there's still a lot of concern. Again, there's concerns over the disposal of components, wildlife. We heard from several hunters who have noticed a change in, in game and the, and the way that game is behaving. Distributed solar in general, solar on, on a rooftop of a house or a building is, is generally widely, widely accepted, not a problem. And we did ask in the survey what other amenities that people would like to see instead of solar. And then there are, there are concerns, and I think there's national concern right now. And that's just reflected here in the county about grid, electrical grid capacity, both with, you know, utility-scale solar and with the advent of, or the wave of electric cars that are coming. So, there's concern. That doesn't mean that, that can't be worked out. There was, there, we heard pretty clear, pretty clearly that stakeholders that attended the, the focus groups believe that there's enough utility-scale solar in the county. The majority of respondents believe that energy projects should be limited to a very small percentage of land in the county. We did not determine what that, what that means, very small percentage. And then, again, I'm, I'm repeating myself, the displacement of wildlife, loss of farmland, et cetera, is, is, is concerned. People understand that there's economic development value. But again, if you're, if you go in a straight-line projection, in theory, there becomes a point of diminishing returns, and it's up to the county to determine what that point is. So, so there is precedent throughout Virginia of other localities, as you may have, have researched, limiting, limiting solar, energy projects with solar in particular. I know that, you know, obviously, you need a rezoning and a CUP now, so that's some limitation. But other localities have figured out ways to limit solar through, through acreage limits or even through just ways to mitigate the impact, like buffers and height, height limitations, et cetera. So, the next phase is to determine where we go with this amendment. So, in that, we'll help you do whatever, whatever you want. We'll do whatever, as your consultant, we'll make whatever calculations you want. We'll make, do the research recommendations, whatever is your will. And so, yeah, so we need to identify, sorry, I'm reading my, my bullets. We just need to identify your priorities so that we understand how to proceed. This was presented to the same PowerPoint. We actually didn't gloss through a couple of slides because the planning commission had questions about acreage calculations. I glossed through them here because we wanted to make sure to actually give you exactly the same PowerPoint. So, we came up with three different scenarios. And again, these are based around the calculations. And again, these are to create a straw man as points of discussion for you, as jumping off points. They are not, again, we're coming here with no, with no judgment and just here to assist you all to make this decision. So, we came up with three scenarios and sold them to the planning commission. I will tell you, planning commission recommended that we find some ground between scenario one and scenario two. But, but, anyway, so theoretically, number one, we, the county would create enough guidelines to have no additional energy projects in Surrey County. You would not be alone in Virginia. Other localities have done this, and they have done this within the bounds of the law to figure out how to, how to cease the solar energy projects. That is one, that is one option that you can do. It will send a clear signal. It will say that enough is enough, what we have or what we have maybe that has been proposed or is somewhere in the approval process, then that, you could, you could, that's one option. So, the second option is to set very clear limits on future energy development. And to say, and you may, you may say, we have 11% now of, of total developable land covered in utility-scale solar. You may say, well, we think 25% is appropriate, and we will consider applications, you know, between 11 and 25%. That's an option. Or, or I just made up, I just made up 25%. So, so, so again, all of this is to say that you have many, many options. We have, let, let me give you that, that conclusion after the, after the third one. But then scenario number three is, we set no new restrictions. We continue along the straight-line projection. You all are well aware of what has happened in the past five years and how many new projects have happened in five years. And so, to calculate a straight-line projection over the next 20 years, we haven't done that exact, oh, sorry, we have done that exact calculation. Could bring, a straight-line projection would bring another, an additional 12,000 acres by 2030. So, straight, current line of, current rate of development, straight-line projection, just simple math, that's where you'd be in 2030. So, these are three scenarios. Again, we are just, we are here to make whatever calculations and, and abide by what you want. Again, the planning commission recommended that there's something in between scenario number one and scenario number two, which would mean fairly, fairly restrictive, very considered in terms of, you know, not being located near historic sites or must be a certain very close distance to, or, you know, be bisected by a transmission line, for example. There are lots of different, different ways that you can do this. But planning commission did recommend not to cut it off so that there are no more. And, you know, not to be totally permissive, but, but, you know, have a limited approach to permitting more projects within, within reason and, and to have that control. So, I, yeah, so the next steps, again, is it's up, it's up to you. We're here at your disposal. We will, we will continue to work with you until you get an amendment that everyone is satisfied with and, or at least all of you are satisfied with. And then we will create the draft language and present it back to the planning commission and to, to you. I'm also happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Board members' questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, I've just got a couple. I was looking at, I don't even know what page it is, page three. It said, "Three utility-scale projects have already been built totaling 82, 8,260 acres, 7.1% of developable land." What, what is, I got my definition of developable land, but what is that definition?
Sure. You're on page three of the memo?
I'm on our board packet. So, yes, I'm assuming this, yes.
Okay, okay. So, developable land, we, we defined as, we had initially, I'll just give you the background. We had initially said, it's this percentage of the county total, and we had started with the county boundary. Well, half of that is a river. I mean, a half of, you know, half of the river is, is in there, right? And then, and then you have wetlands, and then you have slopes over 45 degrees, et cetera, right? So, so we use GIS to extract all of that. And so, developable land is land minus floodplains, water, am I saying this right? Floodplains, water. Mr. Holmes Foster did the actual GIS calculations. And then, and then prime farmland is, is more restrictive, but it, but it's important information.
But, but prime farmland is a part of that, developable land?
Yeah, there are two, there are two different calculations. Imagine that you're just adding factors. So, we, we came up with development, developable land, these factors. But also, prime farmland is a calculation from the USDA. So, we use their data set for that.
Understood, and thank you.
Other board members? Well, I'm, I'm quite impressed with your work and appreciate it because I'm thinking we're on a path and we don't actually know what path we're on. And so, with this, at least we now have a path and some decisions that we can, I would suggest that the board consider this and talk about it in another session where we can digest and digest and whatever we need to do, and probably with you all, including and the planning commission.
Can I make a, can I make a, make a point?
Yes.
So, the purpose of the presentation tonight was to try to see if we can get consensus from the board for the planning commission to move forward with the, with the comprehensive plan amendment. So, tonight, we want, we didn't want to bring the comprehensive plan amendment to you without you all having input into that. So, you weren't, you weren't seeing it for the first time when a public hearing is here. That, I don't, we didn't think that would be appropriate. We felt as though you all should see it way before it even gets to developing the policy. We feel that because, because it's going to come to you all, you should have some input about where the planning commission, if you agree with the planning commission's direction of, you know, if you're looking at scenario one and two, somewhere between there. And if, if we're all on the same page, then at least gives our consultants some kind of guidance of what we should be seeking. So, that's the, that's the basis of the presentation tonight, was kind of to talk about it and see if, exactly if we can move in that direction. And our planning commission, we'll be talking about it at the next planning commission meeting later, later on this month, so that we can get busy and, and, and work and bring some, some products back to you. But we'll, we'll be keeping you all in the loop on where we are regularly so that you aren't just seeing things for the first time when it's time for a public hearing.
That sounds wonderful.
Appreciate that, Ms. Wade.
So, you have developed a comprehensive-
Now, they're going to work on it.
Okay, you got to work on it. Okay. Very good.
Madam Chair, I move that we would authorize the planning commission to go forward with bringing back a presentation to the board for approval from scenarios one and two.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved. Second? Although, any discussion?
Just, just briefly, I just had a comment to make with the planning commissioners. You know, we, we all live here. We all know our districts fairly well and everything. And I don't know if other districts are as defined as the Dendron District is. I've lived there all my life, most of my life. But my point of it is, in talking to citizens, I know in the district where it would be acceptable and where it wouldn't be pretty fairly clearly. So, I don't know. I just was, was thinking that. And it may not be that clear in lots of districts. But just, just let you know that, so.
May I, may I engage, may I ask you a question? If we were to do a calculation that was to determine appropriate locations on utility lines away from historic sites, maybe, and, and this wouldn't- lines away from historic sites, maybe, and this wouldn't include all of prime farmland, just as a percentage, would that, do you think that that would meet the concerns of your constituents? Or are there other things? My question is, are there other aspects that we should take into consideration when we come up with a draft amendment?
No, I think you all have done well. You've hit it. In fact, my looking through this hits that concerns, I guess is what I'm saying. Because when I say, when I say there are areas that the citizens would likely be okay with, it's, you're hitting those criterias. If you're not, a visual impact, not prime farmland, not prime timberland, if you understand me. And they all, it doesn't negate all the property in the district, if I'm making sense.
Yeah, well, I think we're exactly, that's, so if that's the directive that we're given, we will go forward. We'll start with GIS calculations, all of that factoring in, buffering historic areas, considering view sheds. I know that that's something that you've been considering, historic view sheds. And then, we'll come back with a draft, and everything we do is a draft.
That's what we're authorizing you all to do.
Yeah, yeah. So, our next step is GIS calculations, which will lead to the draft language for an amendment. And we're thinking that the amendment actually will look something like this memo that will be both, a little bit of background, the calculations, the reasoning, and maps, as well as, and then that will, that can be adopted as an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, thank you. There's a motion on the floor.
Madam Chair, if I can, I will have to abstain from voting on this this evening. I need to abstain from voting on this this evening.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to remember now what the motion was.
I made a motion that we would authorize the planning commission to continue to investigate this with Scenarios One and Two, and bring back a recommendation to the board for approval.
And I believe I seconded that.
Yes. So, Mr. Calhoun, you are not in agreement with that motion?
He's abstaining.
Are you just abstaining? Okay, thank you. Well, I say yea to, oh, okay, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Those that say nay, aye from me. So, no nays, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. County administrators report at this time, and as you may know, we have our deputy county administrator with us tonight. Our county administrator's not feeling that well, so she's not here tonight. I do want you all to know why. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. This evening's county administrative report will be comprised of updates from several departments, building and inspection services, parks and recreation, as well as solid waste. Building inspection will be Mr. Matt Westheimer. Parks and recreation, Mr. Dale Rollins. And solid waste and sanitation will be Mr. Derek Moore, and we will receive them in that order. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Last week, I provided a six-month progress report to Ms. Rollins and Mr. Douglas, the county administrator in Sussex, to give an overview of the accomplishments made for the combined building services, service inspections that we've been doing. And I wanted to share those with her. I didn't know that was going to give me a spot on the agenda tonight, but I'm thankful for it. I'm thankful that it did. So, I've got seven just keys that I would like to highlight. The permit fee update says, you know, effective July 1st, our new permit fee schedule went into effect. The new fee schedule was adopted in both localities. We've made some much-needed changes to the fees, not only the fee amount, but also made it much easier to navigate. The fee increase will make us much more aligned with our neighboring localities, and provide some much-needed revenue for services provided by our department. The applications and forms have all been handed out, that are all handed out by our department, have been updated. The forms and applications are identical in both counties, and some much-needed information been added to make it much easier for the public to fill them out. Both the forms and the permit fees are now available online, giving our customers the added option to fill them out and submit them online. Inspections hotline and email, excuse me. We now have a centralized call-in number for emails, emails for all inspection requests. This will allow us to better serve the public when one of the permit technicians is out. No longer will we have to rely upon another staff member from a different department to fill in. This will take some time to get fully implemented, so to try to speed up the process, we've been passing out cards with all of our newly issued permits, as well as placing them on our webpage. Speaking of the webpage, both localities have newly improved building inspections webpages. A special thanks to the IT departments in both localities for making this happen. This provides customers with the information they need, is especially helpful for the contractors that are working from out of town that don't want to make the trip down to submit their applications. Inspection and plan review turnaround times. Inspections are being conducted within a 24-hour period in both localities, and plan review occurring well within our seven-day goal. And just for a point of reference, for the month of June, we conducted a total of 200 inspections and reviewed 17 plans. Staff certification. Both permit technicians have attended the mandatory classroom training offered by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and both are working towards certification and hope to have it in the coming months. This will award us the recognition from the state as having a fully accredited building inspections department in both localities. Lastly, our staff meetings. Both staff from Surrey and Sussex meets once a month to go over new information and talk about how the program is working. This has sparked a great relationship between the two permit technicians that now call on each other when they have questions and bounce ideas off each other on a regular basis. Both Wanda Pittman here in Surrey, and Janelle Whitfield in Sussex have been truly great to work with, and they provide excellent customer service and are wealth of knowledge. I feel truly blessed to have both of them on my staff. As you can see, we have been very busy, have received a lot of good positive feedback on the program, and hope that you are as excited about it as I am. And again, I wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members' questions? Comments?
No questions, just compliments on being able to take over this task between the two counties. I know that's not easy to put that together. So, thank you for a job well done.
I would also say ditto. Thank you for putting this together and making it work.
Thank you, Ms. Low.
I know our citizens are thankful too. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Harrison. It's indeed a pleasure to stand before you this evening to report, make a report about Surrey Parks and Recreation. It's an exciting time at Surrey Parks and Recreation. We are looking forward to moving forward, moving the department forward at Parks and Recreation. We continue to navigate and return to a more inclusive sense of normalcy. Although we still take necessary steps and offer recommendations to ensure that our citizens and visitors are safe, we are fully open to the public, and we are striving to offer a wide variety of programs and activities which are geared towards and are proven to be attractive to a more, much more diverse group of people, and gaining more and more participation from the public at large. We also continue to collaborate and form partnerships with other interdepartmental entities and civilian organizations, in an effort to ensure that the citizens and employees of the county are able to take full advantage of our facility by offering space for meetings, workshops, trainings, and other services as needed, and without prejudice. Our county's motto, unity in the community, starts with us as Surrey County employees. And at Parks and Recreation, we strive to be at the forefront of promoting that motto. So, to give an update, at Parks and Recreation, we continue to offer activities and sports for children of all ages, beginning with our fall and spring soccer. We offer fall and spring soccer to kids from ages four to 15 years old. We play in the Alawite Sports Organization, Alawite Sports and Recreational Department. We had, both in our fall and spring soccer season, we had two regular season championship teams, and they did a very good job of representing. And I'd like to commend our coaches and parents, especially our coaches who take the time to volunteer their services to coach our children. Also, we continue to offer winter basketball from ages six to 14 years old. And again, we had three regular season championship teams in different age groups, and one tournament champion. Now, youth football will be returning to Surrey, although it will be under the auspices of a newly formed organization, the Surrey Youth Sports Organization. And although we don't have a formal agreement with that organization, we do allow them to use the facilities in terms of practice, practice fields, some equipment that we have in our possession. So, they're able to use that. And that organization is headed up by two Surrey natives, Mr. Shannard Newby and Mr. William Johns. They will be playing in an organization called the Peninsula Youth and Cheer Organization out of the Hampton Roads area. And this, all of these sports organizations is critical and vital to our school sports because it serves as a feeder program for our JV, our middle school, as well as our varsity programs at Surrey County Public Schools. So, it's very important that we continue to have these activities because it teaches them the fundamentals, and that's what's needed as they start their journey in sports. We also offer, we have our annual kite festival, which, festival which is held in the month of April. That is an activity that promotes family togetherness. It's something that we started five years ago, and it continues to flourish every year. Also, our annual community festival, which is an Easter festival, which we do in conjunction with the Surrey County Sheriff's Office, Department of Social Services, and the Royal Steps Social Club, which is a local organization. During that activity, we have a parade, we have pictures with the Easter Bunny, we have children and adult Easter egg hunts, games, prizes, and just fun for all. And we also appreciate the Sheriff's Office providing hot dogs and things of that nature for our citizens. The bike share program at Surrey Parks and Recreation. We were able to purchase with grant money from the oversea foundation, 12 bicycles that we have at Parks and Recreation that are able to be checked out by the public. We are getting activity, more activity now. It's part of our healthy living initiative, so people are taking advantage of that. Again, it's something that promotes family togetherness, as well as an outlet for exercise and outside activity. We have our exercise annex. Many of you have heard about it before, some have not. This is, again, equipment that we were able to purchase through grant money. We have an elliptical, we have a treadmill, we have two spin bikes, we have a four-station weight machine, and we have free weights. Again, that is something that's attracting a more diverse group of people. It's getting increased activity, and so, we're now looking at increasing our activities and evening hours possibly because of the amount of activity that we're having. We also have fitness and step exercise classes. Our fitness class is taught by Ms. Charnay White, who is our, also serves as the county registrar. Those classes are offered on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM. They are well-attended. Our extreme step class is taught by Mrs. Ashley Turner out of Wakefield, Virginia. Both of these instructors are certified instructors in their field. And again, this is something that's been taken off, we're getting very good participation in both classes. We also have disc golf. Again, we are one of the very few areas in this state, and especially in this region, to offer disc golf. It's very popular. We're getting, every day, we're getting new and repeat players to come and play on our golf course. We are in the final phases of getting our scorecards and our informational cards. And it's a little more detailed than we initially thought because we have to have GPS coordinates in order to, that the players will be able to navigate the course. And it's going to be important when we actually start to have, be official to host tournaments, that they have, we don't want to just put any type of information out there. We want to be, you know, top-notch when we present this as a public offering. It is a public offering there, but when I'm saying public offering, I'm referring to tournament offerings. So, it's important that we take the correct steps in order to be able to do that. We are having a lot of adult activities in terms of taking advantage of the campus for walking, not only the campus, but the inside of the building, our driveway which runs from the Route 10, back to the circle area to the rear of the campus. We're getting more and more people taking advantage of being outside, getting that extra activity and extra walking, especially the seniors. Seniors are taking advantage of that opportunity. Also, we offer open gym and indoor soccer. Now, open gym is offered between the months of April and September. And those days are Sundays from 6:00 to 8:30 PM for ages 12 to 17 years old, on Mondays from 6:00 to 8:30 PM for ages 18 to 35 years old, and on Fridays from 6:00 to 8:30 PM for age groups 36 and up. And again, that's something that's, people have been asking for, and so, we tried to make accommodations to be able to squeeze everything in, but we had to separate it according to the months that we have. Indoor soccer is offered between the months of October and February, and that's a very popular activity for, we offer that for ages 15 to age 25 on Mondays from 6:00 to 8:30 PM. We also have other daily activities going on throughout the week during normal operating hours, which include pickleball, volleyball, badminton, access to our cyber video gaming area, and indoor and outdoor basketball. In the coming months, we plan on offering family movie nights, which will take place once a month, beginning at the end of July and running through the end of October. I'm also happy to announce that we have recently onboarded three new employees at our dockhand and kayak rental attendance stations. They actually started working the weekend of June 17th. They work on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, Friday evenings from 12 noon until 8:00 PM. On Saturdays and Sundays, from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM. And we split those shifts between the three employees. They have been well-received. It's a welcome addition to our team, and we've gotten really nice compliments from the public for offering that service. We also have purchased life rings that will be installed by our maintenance department, as well as other entities that we will need to ensure that those employees are safe. We have whistles for them, we have water and Gatorade provided for them, we have hats, hat coverings to make sure that they're not exposed to the sun, and we also have the bright orange identifiable vests for those employees. For the past couple of years, we haven't been able to host a Nataway Indian Powwow because of conditions and situations beyond our control. However, we will be hosting it again this year, the third week of September. I've been in ongoing conversations with Mr. Rick Kelly, who is the coordinating committee chair. We're working on logistics to ensure that we have a safe and successful powwow. And some of the other activities that we partner to host are the Virginia Department of Transportation Rodeo, the National Night Out with the Sheriff's Office, and the Juneteenth Festival, which just recently took place, and that's coordinated with, through the United Two and Power Group. Finally, I'm pleased to report that we had a very well-attended, and I think very successful fireworks celebration. As you all know, we were unable to secure materials to host a fireworks celebration on last year, but I think the public was pleased with this year's presentation. At final count, we had 2,219 attendees. We had great music, great food, fun, and just an overall enjoyable time for everyone. And I think Mr. Jeff Gibson and Gibson Fireworks and- And I think Mr. Jeff Gibson and Gibson Fireworks and Pirate Technics did an outstanding job with the presentation. I would like to thank Mr. Tony Wilford for providing our sound reinforcement. And a special thanks to our Surrey County Sheriff's Office, the Emergency Management Office, State Police Office, and the sheriff also for coordinating with local surrounding entities and, and security, making arrangements with other offices to provide security for this event. And I think that with the extra police presence, it gave us everyone a sense of, of security. And we were very fortunate that we had no incidents, no reported incidents that I'm aware of. And it's just, you know, I, I want to also congratulate and, and say how much I appreciate the citizens of our great county because they showed the exact example of what unity in the community is with so many things going on, so many acts of violence and hate and, and indignity going on around us. We've just been blessed. And that concludes my report from Surrey Parks and Recreation. I'll be glad to entertain any questions you may have or comments.
Mr. Rollins, could you put in a plug for the kayak rental at the Marina as well as this upcoming kayak tour?
Absolutely. We do have kayaks for rent at the Marina. We will be having in September, the weekend of the 10th, our second annual Up the Creek with a Paddle event sponsored by the Tourism and Economic Development. And we will partner with them for that event. We will be again, putting out flyers and signage promoting our kayak rental program. Again, that's something that, you know, we, we put into place a couple of years ago, but I believe this year it's really going to take off. And I think it's something that everyone would be looking forward to. You're welcome.
Mr. Rollins, I would just like to say that I'm really excited about everything that's going on at the rec center. So many times we hear our young people say, there's nothing to do in Surrey County. There's nothing going on at the rec center. And that's the exact opposite of what I'm hearing from you tonight. So I would say continue to promote your programs. If there's anything I can do to help you promote with the young people, please let me know because you've got some great things going on at that rec center that I was unaware of. And so I'd say probably there are others in our county who have no idea what's going on at that rec center. So just continue to promote those programs, they're excellent programs. So thank you, Mr. Rollins.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just one comment and this is, and thank you too. And again, we need to, kind of like the school systems, I think that sometime even myself and citizens in the county don't own aware of what's going on down, down there and everything too. And this is, this is not so much a criticism as it is a successful program. And I'm talking about the Marina and what's going on down there and everything. And, and I, and Ms. Rollins is aware of this and I'm just putting out a plug here too. Boy, do we need more parking down there. And I'm getting, and I don't know what the solution of it is. And I, I, I think I had CCDU board members on it and everything because some concerns, you know, that, anyway. You, you, you understand the problem and everything. And I, Mr. Calhoun and I talked about it and I don't know what the solution to that is. Even having a external parking lot somewhere with a shuttle back and forth on the busy, busy weekends or something. Because again, and you don't want to dissuade some of the locals like, hey, I go down there and it's out of town. People have taken my spot, you know? And, which I understand what they're talking about, but you don't want to dissuade that either. And I don't know, Mr. Calhoun, if you ever get some thoughts about, I don't know whether there's a piece of property around there or something that we could use and, and especially now that we've got dockhands that could, you understand me? Do some shuttling or something, I don't know. But that, again, that's successful, people are wanting to come there.
Right. And that could be an option during the Up the Creek with the Paddle event. We do offer shuttle to the overflow parking area for, you know, when the parking lot gets full. So that could be an option.
Yeah, and you know this, we've had some events at the farm and stuff and I know just a farmer has one of these carts and I know you can actually rent them from the rental companies. You understand me, a pull behind, multiple seat type cart or something might be helpful. So, but, but hopefully we can find a resolution because again, many, many people are using that facility. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Just like I said, Mr. Rollins, thank you for the leadership you've given to the Department of Recs since you've taken on this great responsibility. Just want to let you know, job well done, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get with him, Mr. Rollins, and talk about that parking.
Okay, yes sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chairman, Chairwoman Little, at this time I would also like to thank Mr. Calhoun for his involvement with the Marina as a board member. He's even prior to Mr. Rollins taking the lead in Parks and Recs. He's come down there on hot days and giving advice and suggestions. So we thank you, Mr. Calhoun, for your, your involvement.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Solid waste. Mr. Derek Moore.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Mr. Harris. Board members. Talking about, we doing a solid waste where we got our signage up a lot of places, different places. And we doing resident checks, mostly in pools. We get a lot of trash from out of county there. We've been going last couple of times, went down on Saturday evening and Sunday evening. And they was bringing trash in by the truckloads from all of Alawite. So I was, I was out sending myself, you know, we sent them back across the line. But the problem we having is a lot of that trash comes out of Alawite County. Now they wait till we close, we getting a lot of trash at the gate, at the gates when we close up. I don't know what that solution going to be, but that's something we dealing with at that end of the county. Because we so close to the county line. We get, and Denver, Denver too, but it's not as bad as down Mantua, down Pools. And we getting, we getting, we do traffic, resident checks in Denver too. And we do have a few, but not, nowhere near as bad as down that way. And so that's something we doing more and more resident checks. We was doing them during the week and found out most of the trash was coming on the weekend. Now, Alawite, their dump site is closed on Wednesday. So we was doing them on Wednesdays too. But most of the trash, I think I was down here, I forget what day I was down, about a couple of weeks ago. And they had eight, eight different vehicles coming, two trucks full of trash come across the county line. And I sent them back across there. And, but they, they probably come back a lot of, and then we on Monday morning, we getting trash at the gate after we close, probably late at night. Now, in September, the site at Rensmill, Alawite, now they gonna close for six months. Yeah, and their nearest site gonna be Jones Creek, that's at the foot of the, over in Rescue or over at Curl Bridge. It's over in the countryside of Alawite. So we gonna catch it, you know? We can do the best we can to prevent it, you know? You may even bring some people in just to do residence checks, but that's only good while we there, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's, that's the main thing. And I think, um...
Mr. Moore, excuse me, Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Mr. Moore, do we have cameras at these?
We don't have any cameras at all, at, at all. And me, I talked to Ms. Rollins, she did admit that is option, you know? Only thing about it though, we put cameras there, we, we had to enforce it, you know? People come and they do what they do and nothing ever done about it. We, two people make example out of them.
Right. And, and it appears to me, just from what you're saying, and I, again, I'm going to speak from the Carsley district. You know, I, I love a lot of things in Carsley, one being the Dollar General, the other being the, where I can take my trash. Ours, I find is always clean and always well maintained. And I do appreciate that. So it appears that it would not be something that we might need cameras at all of the sites, but this particular site you're speaking of, I would say cameras would, would really help us with that issue.
We less than a mile from the county line, Alawite, and we closer to their nearest dump site. So let me tell you what, the one lady's out there, she said she been coming over there for years. She been coming there for years, I thank you. So that's, that's one of the things, but my main thing right now is trying to keep site mains, keep the paddles down. And they doing pretty good, but I'm probably do another one, this one, drag the sites. The site in Denver, that's the last site with the green dumpsters out there. And I got, I ordered dumpsters, we got, I went to 20 yard dumpsters and we have them here. And we wanted to put the green yards out specially for, we right now, we have a vendor to come in to dump those dumpsters. We paying them close to $3,000 a month to dump the dumpsters out there. So I didn't go with the 30 yard dumpster like the site, other sites I have with, with the 20 yard dumpsters. It gets more convenient for people putting trash and they don't have to lift it over the head. 30 yard dumpsters over my head, you know? They hold more trash, but they inconvenience, you know? But it's 20 yards like this here, and the average person can throw it in there. So I want to put five of those in Denver and one 30, one 30 yard for their furniture. That's my plan. And that's, that's my next plan I'm working on. And I wanted to shut the site down for two days. I want, when they close, when they dumped it, when they disposed of come in on a Monday to dump the dumpsters, I want to start to move the dumpsters out there that Tuesday. And Wednesday I want to close down for site mains, want to dress the site up, you know? Put material all the way to the wall, what's the material I'm talking about, crush and run or whatever we put out there. And close it down, bring my, bring my lawn dumpsters in and by that. Now, I can do it in a day, but I want to do two days just to get myself so I won't be rushed up. That's a Denver site, that's the last site in the county with four yard boxes. You know, we, then another thing too, we have to wait for the vendor to come dump those boxes. And a lot of times they be late in the afternoon dumping them and they full Monday morning, you know? So if we can get that in, get that done, that's my next project and I wanted to, I want to get that done this month because the dumpsters are here and I'm just waiting for approval to go ahead with that.
Well, please tell my friends in Carsley, at the Carsley site, that Ms. Monahan gave them a shout out because really, I'm very pleased with the, with the Carsley site.
When they look good, I look good. I thank you, appreciate that. Yeah. Anybody have any questions they want?
Mr. Moore, I have a question. The facility across from the volunteer rescue squad, they've been missing their tractor for quite, quite, quite some time. What's the status on that?
Surrey Four has the tractor.
I'm assuming they've had it since it's broken.
Yeah, they was waiting on parts, that's everywhere it can get parts. But they have everything to, what I took it down there for is fixed. And I had, they had a couple of cylinders leaking, cylinders leaking, cylinders leaking on it. I asked them to fix that, so I'm hoping we get it this weekend.
Great.
I'm hoping, I hope we do it. He didn't tell me that, what I hope we do because it was ready last week and he gonna fix that leak on the cylinders. All they do is pack it.
Right.
So if I might talk to Charles tomorrow and see where we at with that. But we are within the next week or I hope this weekend we ought to have it back.
And then you and I discussed on the telephone a couple of months ago, many months ago, about the, that tractor having the claw.
Grapple, yes, and the people were misusing it and were having to grab, grab a grabs and wouldn't let go. So I put the bucket back on there and maybe down the road somewhere we can do some training with that and maybe get it back on there, I don't know. But I know I was going to every day to unlock it.
I would, I would ask that, that happened because I've taken some large stuff down there. I'm 62 years old and, and those folks there at, at, when I go sometime older than I am and they, they're very kind and helpful. But it's just, you know, it would be a lot easier to use that grapple and just push a sofa refrigerator off the end.
I understand what you're saying, but this is another thing too. We, we don't recommend they take stuff off of people vehicle or trailer or whatever. Because if they get hit, they want us to pick, fix it, you know? And it's easier to hit them when you trying to grab something off it, you know? It's easier to hit. We had it happen before, somebody hit somebody's trailer and they want, you know, the county to pay for it, you know? So I'd rather, if you can put it on the ground, I let them pick it up, be a whole lot easier, you know? That's where we at right now, anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I could just ask you one. You said the, the Rensmill, Alawite site is going to be closing down?
For six months, for six months, they doing a renovation. I think they going, I'm not sure, but I think they're going to put the ramps up where you can drive up. Like the six months, I'm saying about what they gonna do. Yeah, you know?
Well, the reason I was asking, I don't...
That's, that's gonna be in September now.
Yeah. Wonder if we couldn't make contact with the county administrator down there to see if they couldn't, to, you understand me? See if they couldn't have an alternate.
Yeah, I thought they should have put up a temporary site, but they said they wasn't going to do that. But I, I thought the same thing because like you said, I mean, you look from Rushmere to Rescue, man, that's a long. Yeah, then down to Curl Bridge, that's the nearest one. And they got the transfer station on 620, you know, going towards Eyeball. But it's still a long way from Rushmere, you know? Surrey whole lot closer, especially at nighttime.
Tell them to put, put, help us, help us.
I think Ms. Rollins did talk to the county administrator about that because she was the first one to notify me about it. But we do what we can do, but like you said, they coming there at nighttime, Monday morning stuff probably at the gate and that's, most of that come out of Alawite County, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's not Surrey folk.
No.
No.
Well, I think you mentioned this earlier, but if, even if we could get someone to work night shifts until we can get a handle on this, on those nights where you see it's happening, at least we'd have someone there to turn them away.
Right.
Because right now you don't have anyone working night shifts.
The gates closing on weekends at 4 o'clock and then during the week close at 6 o'clock. So a whole lot of stuff happening in the darkness, you know what I'm saying?
That's what a whole lot of things.
Yeah. But other than that, that's what, that's all I have, you know? I'd like to get started, I think we was waiting on the board to approve those days closed so we can start on the Denver site. And I'd like to do that if y'all want to talk about that.
The days that the Denver site would be closed?
For, for renovation. Mm-hmm. Now, I wanted to do this coming Tuesday and I talked to Bay Disposal, I moved the boxes, but the paper don't, we have to put it in the newspaper and they don't come out to next Wednesday. So if we can do it the following week, that'd be good.
You want to have it announced in the paper?
Right, yes ma'am.
The site will be closed?
On that too, I got to get the dates because we had them on the 12th and 13th, but because of that, we have to change it to the following week.
I would think a nice sign, not nice, just put a sign down there to tell them people we...
Oh, we gonna do that. Well, we gonna do...
I don't think you need a recommendation, a motion from the board. I think you can go ahead, just coordinate it with the administrator's office.
Mm-hmm, that's what we gonna do.
Put a sign up and, and you have to go ahead.
Put on the website and everything that's going to be closed, so, so we enroll with that, yeah, that's all I have.
And we'll try to come up with a solution for my district because I, I didn't realize that was happening.
Oh, yeah.
Because I go by there on occasions, I had never heard that that was happening. Well, years ago it was, but then I thought it had stopped. So I see it's starting.
You got people on Talis Beach Road and at Fort Hugger, I mean, most of them in Rushmere Shore, they bring the trash there.
There's a lot of people in, in the Rushmere area, I mean, you know?
Hey, Madam Chair, what's the name of the lady that, do you know the lady that works at the Denver site on the weekend?
Her name is Mary Mallory.
Well, we need her at all sites.
I know, my husband would agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, my husband agrees with that.
Yeah. I think all of them do a good job, but she's, he's on the point all the time. I think, girl, slow down, you gonna get a ticket.
Okay, turn your eye in quickly.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's it.
So we thank you.
I mean, don't we, aren't people who take trash supposed to have that little purple sticker on them?
The purpose of the sticker is to make sure you from Surrey County, you're a resident of Surrey County.
I understand.
If the people knows you, it's not a big deal. But some, a lot of time we switch people from different sites who don't know everybody.
Right.
And that's when the problem come in. And if they can show proof of residence, that's fine. You know, if you don't have a sticker and they show proof of, that's acceptable. And the thing is, is the purpose of that is to keep people from outside of the county from dumping trash in the county. And most of the county, close to the county lines is the main one. But we get them down in, off 42, we get them down there too from out of Prince George County.
Why, I mean, then just out of curiosity of his man, and if somebody drives up and they don't have that purple sticker, I would think your staff should make, have them prove that they live in Surrey County.
Well, they should, they have the right, ask for, matter of fact, it's on the sign. They have the person, ask for proof of residence. You know, we get a lot of static from that sometimes, most time we get it from the people in the county.
Well, then tell them, tell them they can go get a sticker from this.
That's what I have to do, the administrator's office, and we do tell them that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but other than that, we still working, this is progress, you know? And, you know, I see good progress, progress out there, all the sites, they look, all of them look really clean, you know? They come around and I think, another thing I want to try to illuminate Bay Disposal as much as we can. And I talked to Mr. Rollins earlier about putting the dumpsters we had for recycling. We not using them anymore. I was going to put one down at this Parks and Rec and put a deck on one side and the other side open for pickup truck load and stuff. And they can use that instead of Bay Disposal coming in there dumping. Because they charge big time for dumping those boxes. So that's, that's a plan that I have, yeah.
You're noting the changes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Awesome job.
Try to help you in whatever way we can.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, um that was our county administrators' report. And we want to thank those staff members who came up and shared with us. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. And if you would come up and give your name and your district and you have three minutes. Public comments at this time on any subject you have a comment on.
Mike Eccleston, Denver and Blackwater District. I've been attending these board meetings for nineteen years. And I'm repeatedly reminded of a line of one of us, Sir Walter Scott's poems. Oh, what a tangle web we weave when first we practice to deceive. I've seen some pretty lowball things and you're proven dramatically. Sometimes I question your priorities. You're pushing solar. Well, Surrey nuclear's been supporting this county about eighty percent for the last thirty some odd years. And nobody is pushing nuclear. Most people do not know that Surrey nuclear has a water battery in Bath County. At times of low demand, they send power to Bath County to pump water twelve hundred feet up to a reservoir. In peak demand periods, it flips over to generators and it spins the turbines. But ninety percent of the people in Surrey County don't even know about that. I think we should be making things easier for Surrey nuclear rather than solar. Because solar only works during the day. Surrey nuclear works twenty-four seven, except for outages. Uh sometimes I wonder if Surrey County's ever had a a project that requires taxpayer dollars that they didn't like. Example is this gazebo out here for the farmer's market. We got a high dollar gazebo out there that's very underutilized. In a county that doesn't have a drugstore, in a county that doesn't have a grocery store. Sometimes I question your priorities. Is Surrey seafood still on county life support? I can't get an answer to that. I realize there's a lot of projects down there like the kayak. But uh we spend a lot of money down there. I'm here in a bath house down there. It costs eighty thousand dollars. So, but you can, transparency is the issue. We have a problem with transparency. You see none of this online. If you want to spend all this money in computers, communications, be a little more transparent. Thank you.
Public comments. Anyone else?
Susan Corfalo, Spring Grove District. Um I just wanted to commend everybody. Um Parks and Rec, I thank you for what you're doing. It's been one of my things that I know I've said many times up here at the board that I would love to see more stuff being done at Parks and Rec. And there are a lot of things that you had mentioned that I did not know about. And I thank you for doing that and as Ms. Monahan had said, just keep pushing it and pushing it. Because I think a lot of people don't know a lot of things that are going on at Parks and Rec. So I thank you for that. As far as the survey that was done for the energy, I really hope that the board takes into consider and consideration the citizens' comments that were put in that survey and uh and listen to the citizens on that. And another thing that Ms. Monahan said, as soon as you said it, I was like cameras. Cameras would probably be a good thing. I know you'd have to enforce the the law. But you're kind of littering if you're putting trash out there after hours and littering is against the law. And if you can get the cameras and put a sign up there that says cameras are being used and and littering will be enforced just as they have the cameras if you go through a red light. They send you a ticket because you went through a red light and those cameras, those tickets are really, really clear. So I just want to commend everything that's going on right now. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Ellen Eccleston, Denver and District. Solar farms, solar farms. My opinion of solar farms is we have enough, more than enough. This county needs to place a moratorium on solar farms. They are taking up land that could be used for other purposes. Taxable income, I'm sure, is the motivation for approval of these. And I'm sure we need taxes to support all the programs that are going on. The good programs, many of which have been mentioned here tonight. But there are many new homes that are being built in Surrey County. This is a ti- uh new tax revenue for us as well. There are people who are desperate to get out of the cities and get into a more rural setting for the sake of their children, for the sake of their safety, for many reasons. Many old homes, I'm seeing, are just being totally renovated for people coming into the county. They will buy old and to my thinking, a few of them have been pretty dilapidated. But they have been remarkably renovated for new families. That may be a slower stream of revenue for our county. But the the taxes that are generated from businesses that you all are envisioning, I can't see it happening in Surrey County. Maybe it will in time, but people just don't seem to want to come to cap to Surrey County and start businesses. That being said, we are a rural county and that is our biggest asset. When it ceases to be rural, then we're gonna have people leaving Surrey County for people, for places that are more rural than we have become. I would hate to see that happen, but that seems to be the way things work. Now, one other thing I would like more information on is this Love Works Project sign. We're getting a five thousand dollar grant for that. I've grown a little leery of these grants. Because it seems every time that we get a grant for something, then the county winds up if it, even if it's not a matching grant, we wind up spending more money than what the grant was for. And that just should not be. Mike mentioned the um Farmer's Market Pavilion out here.
Three minutes.
If I remember correctly, we had a five thousand dollar grant for that. But we wound up spending, when I was fifty thousand dollar grant, we wound up spending eighty thousand additional dollars on it. That shouldn't happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Charnay and I'm a member of the Carsley District. Um I just want to say as the up and coming generation, we want progression. Um we don't want to be at a standstill. We need things to do. We appreciated the rural, but it's it's time for a change. The counties surrounding us are innovative and they still have peace and quiet, but we still need businesses. We need to grow because as much as people are saying the rural population's gonna move, well, the younger generation doesn't want to stay. And if we don't stay, the population dies with the generation that's here. I've been here all my life, lived here thirty-six years. I purchased my home here. So I'm raising my children here. They go to school here. I graduated here. So I'm only one of few that are willing to stay here to be a part of the process, to be a part of the change and the growth. Not a lot of us are wanting to do that because it's stifled. There are so many people that come up here and stand up here and complain about what we're trying to bring, which makes businesses not want to come here. You know, if they're gonna get a lot of pushback, it's not enticing for them to come to our community and to develop our community so that we can have things and we won't have to have tax increases and and things of that nature that the citizens don't want. But we have to have people coming in and innovative processes and technology and things of that nature to continue to grow forward in the future that the the world is going. And that's what I want to say. But job well done because you all have a hard job because you can't please everyone. You just have to do what's best for the majority for the future of our county. We cannot die off. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm an in the board member. I'm Diane Price. I'm in Surrey District. Live right here in the town of Surrey. I have a concern, really, uh I guess I kind of missed on the consent items down number five. It has to do with our emergency response in this county. I I feel like that our emergency response system should be more of a county in charge. I witnessed just a few nights ago, an emergency in this county. And these are people that are not, that are here, that are not from our county. But they come here and they stay and they expect to have some type of response when they have a catastrophic emergency and what which I witnessed on Monday, friends. And we we need to address the fact that we have one paid crew. And then most often, we don't have another crew to respond to emergencies. And if someone said this this afternoon, our population is getting older, including me. And when you wait, when you're having a catastrophic event and you wait for thirty-five minutes to get help, most of the time, I think it's gonna be too late. I really truly believe that the you uh you as our board need to address what goes on with the uh Volunteer Association here. We need some kind of resolution to address or some something to address this problem that we can, that we have to depend upon Isle of Wight to come to these catastrophic events or Waverly to respond because we cannot handle but one call at a time. And to me, I guess this is silly to say, but as I grew up here, I haven't lived here all my life, but the majority of my life. My family is here. Sir?
Oh, three minutes is up, ma'am.
Okay, well, anyway, I I really would like to address it. And I think it's an embarrassment to our county that we cannot provide more. Um catastrophic.
Madam Chair, could I have an opportunity to address Ms. Ms. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Price, uh everything that everything that you just stated, it has not gone unnoticed by the county. If if you look at our consent item, we did pass a resolution to address exactly what you just stated. You don't have the resolution in front of you, but we passed a resolution from as the board to bring the licenses of the emergency service, medical services under the county. So we will be addressing those issues. They're not going unnoticed. We, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting on this today with the Volunteer Department and we have cooperation with all entities. So we're going to be looking exactly what you're talking about. We know about the situation. And it is our desire to give the best service we can, emergency service, to all the citizens of Surrey. So your concern is our concern and we have addressed that issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott is our emergency services representative from the board.
Hi, my name is Elva Clayton. I'm from the Clamout District. And I just want to piggyback off of what Ms. White said about progression in the county. I have a huge concern about people that come up and want us to stop it. My concern is that I have a home in the county. I have grown children that have moved out of this county. They say they do not want to come back to the county because there's nothing here. So my concern is when I'm gone on, I can't, I want my kids to come back. And we have to put things in this county to entice them to come back. So I would challenge the board and ask the board to please, please, bring some things in this county. We can stay rural and also we can have things too. We don't have to, you still can live in your rural areas and we want a grocery store. We can't buy. I had to go and and purchase fruit today for my sister because she was sick. But I had to go clear to Hope where to get it. So the grocery store, we need things. So staying rural is good, but we can have the best of both worlds if we work together. So Board, please keep that in mind that we have the county dying off, the kids do not want to come back. And I hate to see the property that I've worked hard for to obtain for my children and they don't want it. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Chandler from Bacon's Castle District. Good day. Thank you guys for your service. Ms. Little, you and I have known each other for quite a while now. Thank you. First of all, I want to follow Charnay's recommendation. I'm three ti- or excuse me, twice as old as she is, but I agree with development. Our grocery store, you know, the roof has never been finished on there and there's water leaking into that building. And there was a study done that I was part of and so was county administration at that time where they did a study for Surrey County. The most important thing, and this was five years ago, they did the most important thing was that grocery store. It's called a foundation business. And once that foundation building is put into operation, it can draw other businesses because there's traffic. Right now, there's a lot of traffic in and out of this county, but it's going for jobs. There's a lot of traffic that passes through this town, but there's nothing to draw other businesses. Now, like she said, and like this other lady just said, we can keep the period like like our home. We live on Moonlight Road. We got acreage there and we can actually walk around and do things that we're in. And we've been in the county for thirty years. But for those thirty years, the town of Surrey itself has continuously degraded. We do need growth and we can maintain ourselves rural with the growth. But we've got to do something. That study was given to county administration and to the EDA. When I was on the EDA, it was the first time the EDA ever was allowed to put input into the plan. And since that time, it's still not ever been done. And I never saw any outcome of that study that county administration got a copy of and the EDA got a copy of. The other thing is, I want to follow on what Mr. Drewy said about the site, dump site. Maybe the county ought to make a deal with Isle of Wight for them to pay us. Okay, to take their trash. Thank you.
Chair, Chairwoman Little, I would just like to make a comment if I could to Mr. Chandler's statement. And I would like to make him aware that that plan has been implemented. The town of Surrey has met with the Department of Economic Development and implemented. and implemented a downtown revitalization strategy for the town of Surrey. So I just wanted to make him aware of that. Okay. I'm not speaking to you. I asked the chair. Yeah. So this is not back and forth. Thank you. Thank you. We'll get you the information.
And I would, um, since I'm chair, okay. We did do a study, yes, and the area that, um, we were looking at was right outside of, on thirty-one. Where we would have a situation where we would have a small business mall. Where we could have a grocery store, we could have a, okay. So it, it was, this plan is still there, you know, the plan is still there. Um, so what has happened with it, it's a plan, it's there and, uh, at, you know, it was for and against that plan by different entities. So it's still there.
The plan cost a tenth of what the plan, original plan for the county was.
Thank you. All right, um, thank you. Oh, anyone else for public comments? And maybe we'll have board members, if I may. Maybe at some point in time, we'll have another development, um, meeting with citizens and the board to talk further about some of the initiatives that need to happen in Surrey to bring about growth as well as, um, remaining still rural. So perhaps we need to have that type of a meeting. Um, any other public comments? I'm not seeing anyone approach. I will move into, um, board comments. And Mr. Elliott, would you like to start, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would, uh, just like to state that I appreciate the citizens tonight for the comments. And a lot of things that were spoken were near and dear to my heart. I do believe that we are a county that needs to pursue progression in the county. But also maintain our rural nature. It can be done. There are different plans that can go forward and that's one of the reasons why I decided to get on the board. Because I feel strongly that the youth of the county, they, we have one of the best education systems here in the county. They get their education. Then they go to college and leave and get good jobs outside of the county. And we have nothing here to bring them back. We don't have any jobs other than Dominion Power. That's the main thing. A lot of the employment at Dominion Power is not even the citizens of Surrey County. So we need to look at things like that as far as bringing in some major corporations. Major corporations will bring in all, all the other businesses. But we can still maintain our rural nature of the county. So I appreciate the citizens for coming out and speaking on this matter. This is something that we desperately need in the county. There are different surveys that have been taken that if we don't do something on an extreme level as far as businesses in, in the county, we're likely to lose half of the county by, uh, uh, twenty forty, I believe it was twenty years out from now, if we didn't do something of this nature. We only like six thousand sixty-two hundred people in the county. We're looking at losing half of that within twenty years. So the county is dying out. So we need to make the changes necessary for growth in the county. So I thank the citizens for speaking in this matter. And I, I believe it can be a win-win situation for all that want to remain rural. But we need to start focusing on things that's going to keep our, bring our youth back and keep the youth that we do have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drury.
Yeah, that was Mr. Elliott. That's okay.
I was thinking about you were next.
I understand. I, I understand.
Thank you.
Getting a late hour anyway, so, so anyway, so I thank you. And again, I just wanted to thank Mr. Judkins who's still sitting back there and the board for making the elder tax exemption possible and for the, for the conversations on it. Yeah, we are, we're getting older in this county, that's for sure. So hopefully we can figure a way to get it younger too. With, with that said, I was, I think all of us were at the budget meeting we had back, I'm forgetting when it was, a couple of weeks ago, about the budget approval, finally working through that. And I had told Mr. Judkins and talking with him that I would bring this forth to the board and spoke to several board members after it. Is the constitutional officer staff salaries. In talking with him about the elder tax exemptions, I was able to get him to explain to me in more detail about the inequities in the, um, rating of employees. And I know in working in Dinwiddie County, it, they've got the same issue and they are losing valuable staff in their treasurers and commissioner of revenues offices. What happens is like a, how can I say it? A farm team or one of those underpaid baseball teams. These rural counties became the training grounds for, for good staff. And, and your bigger communities, we have Chesterfield, comes and gets them. Yep. And so I would ask and told Mr. Judkins I would bring it up to the board to, to keep this alive of, about the board getting together with the constitutional officers and, and having someone explain to us, you know, the categories. Cause I think there's some inequities between departments, if you understand me. Of one's a deputy here and one's a deputy here and they don't, they're not on the same pay scale. So I would hope that we would keep that alive and, and discuss it at some, at some point in time here. So I did want to keep that, keep that before. The other, the other issue I wanted to talk about this evening, just very, very briefly, as I said, it's, it's getting late and early. It was an early morning for me. Is, you know, serving, serving on a board like this and I'm not poking at the people that are retired on this board like you, cause I know life, when you retire, you fill up your time. Let's just say that. So it's not true retirement. But when you're actively employed, I know Tim knows this well, Mr. Calhoun does, that you run into conflicts from time to time and, and I'm there too. Maybe we appreciate your ministry and everything, but maybe you don't have as many conflicts, if you understand. Okay, you do, you do. But anyway, but, but as an attorney, I, and I wanted to just chat about this. You know, I, you're, you're trained to be empathetic to individuals and, and, and fight for their rights, so to speak, for equal and fair treatment. And, and being an attorney on this county board, sometimes I'm not sure it's a good thing to do. Because you are there counseling the, the community and assisting the community and it runs you into conflict from time to time. And, and I know your board members know this, cause I wrote y'all emails and I know y'all know about this. But the board with their line CUP on, in June, that was approved. Neighbors and, um, and friends came to me questioning the procedures that had been followed. And, and some of these citizens don't live in Surrey County. I'm right on the, on the line. And, um, actually asked me to come over and explain what was happening, cause they weren't aware of the project. And so I started looking into it and as I know, told y'all, I, I did it for you because I wanted to do it as a citizen and got the documents in and found, it's, it's tough, these legal procedures. I mean, I'm trained in it and, and some of the procedures I thought were questionable and they had valid concerns. To preserve an appeal, you have thirty days after the decision, which was Tuesday, July the fifth, with the holidays and everything. And so, so I legally filed a petition that name, you have to name the county, you have to name the board and you have to name a citizen that lives close by. Fortunately or unfortunately, I'm a citizen living close by to the, to the project. And want to explain to y'all that, and then I'll get down to my point. Is that the Virginia law rules state that an attorney cannot represent a private client. I don't consider myself a private client. And a matter in which you participate as a public officer, which I am in this position, again, the reason I named myself as petitioner. It states that the rule does not apply if a government agency, the board, consents. And we'll have to tell you, it puts me in a difficult position, cause I'm trained to, 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 well, I don't like, I don't like rules. But I understand the value of rules and codes and its lawful reason. And the notice procedures in the Virginia code, I've come to appreciate. Because they, they, they add to, um, increase the public involvement and understanding of what's, what's going on. So, so my point of it is, is that, so I filed the petition and wanted the public and the board to know this. And the reason why, it's just asking, it is not a monetary thing, it's not a criminal thing, it's nothing in the world. But saying, hey, were the procedures followed correctly? If they won't, you know, let's redo it and to open those conversations up. And again, I had to do it quick. You don't have much time as a citizen to, uh, to do it. The Virginia code's not friendly to, um, to citizens. It puts the government on a little bit of a advantage. I guess what I'm asking, it, it did make me feel uncomfortable and, and I don't like doing that. I said, well, this is odd. I said on the board that I'm putting a petition, but it's in a line with the Virginia code. I wanna open up the discussion. I know Mr. Hefty is on line. And we discussed it before I did it and he had talked, said he talked to a line, but, uh, before the deadline, hadn't gotten any answer back into the situation. So I had to preserve that open line of communication, uh, cause I knew if I let the deadline go past, it, it would be, it would be gone. So my point of it is, is I need the board to consider making a motion to consent to my filing that petition. And, and this is not so much a request as it is maybe Mr. Johnson, Boris Johnson in England, it's a vote of confidence, so to speak, of whether I stay or not, because I don't want to be in conflict with the ideals of the board. But yet I want to serve, uh, the public and the citizens and, and, and my neighbors. It does not mean that you have to agree with it. It does not mean, uh, that, uh, again, it just means that y'all are okay with me remaining on the board and it's not in the conflict. And look, I've gotten the joy of, sometimes I'm like, man, I don't like getting older, but I tell you one joy of getting older. You don't let things bother you quite as much, you know? You let ego go. You let, you don't take things personally. So, so I still will love y'all if you don't do this. But I just wanted to throw it, throw it at there so I can ponder, cause it didn't make me feel very comfortable. Again, we all gonna have conflicts on the board and Tim can abstain. It's kinda hard for me to abstain in the situation I was in and in now. So with that, board questions, comments?
I, I do have, I have one question. I'm looking at the petition that was filed in the courts now. And it was filed on the fifth. And you said that was the last day. Why was it, why was, we waited until the last, why did you wait till the last day to file it? Because the action has already been taken without the approval of the board. So why did we wait until the fifth and then come to the meeting tonight asking for consent for something that has already been done?
Because the fifth was the deadline.
But, but you, I understand the fifth was a deadline. But this was a matter that we addressed as a board at our last month's meeting. We were thirty, thirty days out. So my question is, the action has already been taken, the petition has already been filed. So why wasn't this brought before the board, before the action has already been filed?
I, two things. And number one is, I'm not gonna go through what life has done to me in June. And I'm looking with a wife with a broken leg at home, but my time is very, very limited. And number two is, I just discussed it with Mr. Hefty before this and was hoping that could be some resolution. And number three is, and I know maybe someone on the board will take offense to this, is I did email y'all last week. I did this last Sunday, Monday. I didn't write this until Sunday, Monday. I didn't draft it until then. So, and I needed to look it over. So, um, so instead of having a July fourth, this is what I did. Just didn't have time. And that's it. And again, if, if y'all don't agree on this motion, I'm not gonna be, again, I'm old enough not to take it, not to take it personally. I'll just have to respond, so.
So is there a motion on the floor?
No.
Okay. I just.
No, I can't.
Was it, no, I know. I know if there was any other questions from board members.
Board members?
I have a question. I also read through the petition and the, um, email, Mr. Drury. And my concern was, as I read it, if we have legal counsel that is in place to make sure that the board crosses every T and dots every I, where was legal counsel when I'm looking at those things that are being said weren't done? And, and I've not been around very long, but I know at the la- at the budget workshop, you know, every other sentence, we had our attorney who was telling us what we needed to do and you must have a public hearing. So I'm a little concerned as to how we've gotten to this when we've had legal, a legal, uh, counsel, an attorney sitting here to assure that we, the board, and again, I was not on the board at the time, but followed the procedure with the public hearings. And I'm, and I'm reading that in the petition that, that that wasn't being done. And I'm just not sure how that was not done if we have a county attorney that is assuring us that we're doing what we need to do. That's my concern. And I also wanted to say while I'm here, um, on this mic, that you, I did receive your email, but it was in spam. It did not come through. I did not have a county email at that time. It came to personal and as spam. And I also sought some legal counsel. And I was told that I did not have to legally respond to that email. So I chose not to.
This is Bill Hefty. I'll, I'll respond to you offline. It's not appropriate to respond to allegations in a lawsuit, in a public hearing, in a public meeting. And these are allegations. Um, they are not necessarily taken to be true. But I'll respond to you separately to, to talk to you about your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty.
Look, I don't want to divide this board, so silence will send me a message too.
Madam Chair, uh, I'm, I just pulled up the petition that, that was filed. And, uh, basically what, what Mr. Drury is asking, what us, the board to do is to give him consent to sue the board that he sits on. And, uh, and, and my clear conscience, I, I would, I can't give consent from about it to sue me as a, as a part of this board. So if it's up for, up for a vote from the board, my vote will be no, not to give consent for him to pursue this matter.
And, and I appreciate your comments and, but let me, let me just clarify. This is not consent to sue. This is consent to remain on the board.
What it take, to take, what, for you to remain on the board, that's, that's, that's your decision. But as far as me giving consent for you to take any action against the board that you sit on, my response will be no.
And, and thank you.
Mr. Dowd, did you? Oh, you have to abstain. Okay. All right, well, I guess it's my turn, term. I agree with the, um, reading of that, um, that Mr. Elliott just read. And I cannot sit here and vote yes for you to sue this board. So my answer would be no.
Sure. And I, I appreciate the honesty. And I'm not sure, Ms. Monahan, there's not a majority, so I'm not sure you need to say anything. So, uh,
Okay.
So I, I'll, I'll give you the opportunity to remain silent. And I, I just wanna make one passing comment is that you know, sometimes as we, the government and, and them, the citizens, and I just wanna stick with the citizens and thank y'all. So, so thank you for consideration.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, may I, may I make a comment? Mr. Drury, I, I hear two things going on here. One about the petition and one about whether you should or shouldn't remain on the board. And I go back to, you know, there's a difference between what's legal and what's ethical. And again, that's not a decision, as Mr. Elliott said, that we can make as a board. I think that's an individual decision that you're going to have to make depending on what you feel is right. And what you feel needs to be done. So I just wanted to, to say that, you know, I, I don't see either that that's a decision we make. I think it is a decision where you decide legal versus ethical.
Thank you for your comment.
On, on this matter at hand, I, I know Mr. Drury, he says something about, uh, his tenure on the board. Since we have Mr. Hefty on the board, what is, what is the, uh, resolution for the board if, uh, Mr. Drury decides to pursue this as a board member? I would just like, be curious to know that.
Uh, again, that's something that I'm glad to talk to individual board members about, um, offline. I don't think since this is a litigation, it's appropriate to talk about it.
Thank you, sir.
In a public meeting. But I'll be glad to talk to you or any other board member offline about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Into my comment.
Okay. Any other comments, board members, from board members? Then I'll have my comments. Mr. Calhoun, do you have any comments?
Oh, yes, please. I'd just like to, uh, again, thank, um, excuse me, Mr. Drury and Mr. Jutkins, Mr. Jeremiah Williams, Thomas Bird, and Bob Chandler on their comments on, uh, well, their comments on the, uh, exemption of taxes of property for disabled persons. I'd like to also thank, uh, Mr. Westheimer, Mr. Rawlins, and Mr. Moore for their comments on the county admin report. And again, the public comments is, I try to do every, every meeting. Notes taken, uh, listened attentively, and, um, I, again, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Yes, I would like to say something. Um, I, I would like to commend Mr. Wade and the Planning Commission for recognizing that we do need to make amendments, um, for the development of future energy projects. I have been on the board now for approximately two weeks. And before I even got on the board in the Carsley District, I had five individuals to talk to me about the Lob-Lolly project. In the last two weeks, I've heard from seven citizens, uh, five from Carsley, two from other districts. One concern was the budget. One was addressing the needs of a, an individual student. And then I had five others contact me about the Lob-Lolly project. So there is a concern, and I'll say again, I think it's important, as, as Mr. Calhoun pointed out, that citizens do speak on the projects, on development, on progression. That's the only way the board members really know the, it, I'll, I'll speak for me. It gives me direction in where I'm going with votes on things when I hear from my citizens. And I like it even more when I hear from citizens in other districts. So I, so I say to the citizens as well, keep speaking. You know, keep, keep being involved in, in the projects, in, in the progression. And, you know, again, I could speak forever and ever on that grocery store because I sit here too thinking, we do have Dollar Generals and we can get general supplies, but we can't get our fruit. We can't get our vegetables. We can't get our meat. And I do think it is far past time that we look at what can we do to have some kind of access to, in this county, to groceries besides what we get at the Dollar Generals. So, um, I'll speak highly of the farmer's market. Ms. Slade, she brings some of the prettiest things I've ever seen. I think there's a way we can incorporate with Ms. Slade even, that we have like an indoor/outdoor market where we can get, we have frozen section, we have the fresh fruit, we have the vegetables. So many things we can do. I think we need to put more time and energy into looking at that and, and seriously moving forward with it. So I just wanted to add that as well. But, um, I will say again to the citizens, keep speaking, keep talking. I know we don't always hear what we want to hear, but you have the right to speak and you have the right to an opinion. And the last thing I want to say, everyone who contacted me on Lob-Lolly had been against it until today. And today, someone spoke with me, and I'll have to say, he brought some really great things to the table that were worth visiting on why it would be a positive thing. Now, I'm not saying that one individual would make me say, oh, let's go jump on Lob-Lolly. I know there are concerns. We can see it. We saw it in the survey. I'm hearing it. But my point is, until we listen to both sides and really look at, maybe there's some valid points on both sides, I don't think we get anywhere. So I do say, keep speaking, keep asking questions, keep calling, and we will do the best we can. So thank you. Come to meetings as well, yes.
Thank you, board members, for your comments. My comments for tonight are very short. The Personnel Committee will interview candidates for the county attorney position and bring forth a recommendation to the full board. At Mr. Drury's request, he will abstain from serving on the Personnel Committee for the attorney interview process. I will serve on the committee instead. Mr. Drury, I will serve. And on Thursday, July the 21st of 2022, I will be attending the VACO Regions One and Four Meeting where legislators for both regions have been invited to speak. And also, the legislators would like to know what each community's legis, legislative issues are. So if you all would, if you have something that you would like to address with the legislators, the state of Virginia, uh, please give me a call before the 21st, because I don't want to go empty-handed. I can think of maybe one or two things, but I would like to hear other board members' concerns about what is happening in Virginia up at the state level by the 21st. Just give me a call or send me a text message. Thank you. Thank you, board members. And at this time, I think we need to go into closed session for Personnel, and we're gonna ask Mr. Hefty to lead us into closed session, please.
Um, there's a little inadequate motion for the board to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion of, um, appointment to, uh, Director of Parks and Recreation.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by the sign. Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Drury? Uh, Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Mrs. Monahan?
Aye.
Aye. As, uh, motion carried. Thank you. And thank you, citizens.
All right, Madam Chair, uh, at this time, you could entertain a motion to return from closed session.
Board members, we need to, um,
Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, return from closed session pursuant to the Virginia Code. Whatever the code section is, I'm not aware of it right now, but according to the Virginia Code,
the Virginia Code, move that we return from code, uh, closed session.
A second. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we also need you all to certify that only matters presented were discussed in closed session by roll call vote Chairman Elliott. I mean, I'm so sorry. Board Member Elliott?
Aye, yes.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Ms. Monahan?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you. And if there's no other business before this board, we will declare our meeting closed. As far as I know, it will be August.
One announcement?
Make the announcement.
Um, would you like to make it? Or would you like me to make it? Okay. Uh, the board would like to formally announce that Mr. Daryl Rawlins has been appointed to the position of Director of Parks and Recreation. Congratulations, Mr. Rawlins.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn until our...
August. I don't know what date that is in August. Day three or four. Okay, August the fourth. It's our usual meeting time at seven o'clock.
Get a second?
Okay. Okay. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Y'all be safe and be careful out there.